Good evening. Welcome to the May 18, 2016 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 5:30 discussing personnel matters. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions?
Christine Beck.
Joanne Cunningham.
Diane Stever.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Mujahsinger.
Lynn Lenhart.
Michael Cooper.
And Judy Keough.
And could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 14, 2016, the May 9, 2016, and the May 17, 2016? So first and second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any approve? Any denials? Any abstentions that item carries? The next item on the agenda is the reason why most of you are here this evening. We had gone through a long process over the past year, did a countrywide search looking for our next superintendent, and fortunately for us, we found her right in our backyard. So tonight, we're going to be swearing in and voting on Jody becoming the next superintendent for Bethlehem. But before I begin that, I'd like to read a couple remarks that I have from some people. "Dear Jody, one of the most important roles we can play in life is to create a vision for an organization and work to explore the possibilities of achieving that dream. You, more than anyone else I have ever known, display that outstanding quality. I have witnessed your ability to imagine big things for B.C. and work to cultivate the efforts of everyone in the organization to accomplish the journey towards that goal. I wish you continued success in an inspirational voyage as you become the chief executive officer of one of the best school districts in the country. You have always had what it takes to fill this role, and the experience from your personal journey have prepared you. My best wishes to you always, and feel free to call me anytime if you ever need to talk. Just make sure you avoid Monday, Wednesday, Thursday afternoons, and Fridays, as I am discovering the benefits of improving my golf swing." Dr. Mike Tobano. Congratulations to you, Jody, and to all of B.C. It's a win-win all around. I'm glad you have been part of bringing you, Jody, to the district. For me and the interview committee, it was clear that you were by far the best person to lead the middle school. During your first year and ever since, Jody, you have demonstrated the judgment, skill, and personal sensitivity that characterizes the best of leaders. In a district as accomplished as B.C., it is not easy to take that quality of student learning and achievement to a whole higher level, but that's what Jody's done as a top instructional leader. Now Bethlehem will have the rare combination in its superintendent of steady and wise direction, coupled with a drive and urgency to make B.C.'s students even more successful. Dr. Les Loomis. And we would like to, at this time, also acknowledge that Jody's husband, Kevin, is here, and her mom, and her sister, and her niece. So let's do what the formal appointment is recommended. The Board of Education approve the following superintendent schools contractual agreement for items A and B. First and second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? And then I need to do...
The oath of office.
The oath of office. Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And the Constitution of the State of New York...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
The duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools.
The duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools.
Congratulations. And now, oh, and I have something else for Jody. We do this something that a lot of people who present to the board know about it, but here is your eagle pen.
Thank you. I'm finishing my 11th year here, and I finally got an eagle pen. So thank you very much. This is such an honor, and I want to thank the Board for appointing me to this position. I want to thank the community for supporting me, and all of the staff, and everyone who came out tonight to congratulate me, and everyone I have to work with here in the community and the staff is just tremendous. The students are tremendous here, so it makes this position, obviously, much easier than elsewhere. I also want to thank my family, my sister and my niece, who errands my namesake, her middle name is Jody. And I told my sister to please come down because if there's any issues, I could defer them to her since she looks so much like me. But we're both in education, and I admire all the work my sister does, and she's really an inspiration for all that she does, and thank you for coming down. And my mom, who has always been a supporter, you know, she had to deal with my sister and I growing up, two twin girls who could deal with it, and always been encouraging to us and to do whatever it is we want to do. So I love you all. Thank you. And of course, my husband, who has a tremendous sunburn, I don't know why he didn't wear sunscreen today, golfing. He is perfecting his golf swing as Dr. Tobano for dealing with all of the late nights. This is actually the most I've seen him all week and will until Friday, always being supportive. When I come home and I need to talk about work, he just listens and then finally says, you know, "Jody, just let it go. You're home now, so relax." But I couldn't do this job without all of the support of everyone here in this room and in the district, so thank you very much.
Well, actually, I need to say a little bit of something. I've obviously lived through, probably when I first started, I could almost say, five superintendents, but this is the first female superintendent of the school district, and I think that's a great accomplishment and certainly a role model for all of your students out there that, you know, anything is possible, whatever you want to do, whether you're male or female, you can achieve anything, and really thrilled to have Jody here.
Thank you, Will.
Next is the Student Senate report. Do we have a representative from Student Senate here tonight? Okay, great.
How are we doing tonight? Sorry. So this week, or next week, we have a very important week. We have three events going on for Student Senate. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we have spring dodgeball, and that's going to be pretty eventful. A lot of teams so far have signed up. We have 20, 20-something odd teams, so over four days, we'll do a double-elimination tournament. Wednesday is our blood drive, annual blood drive. Looking to sign up, I think, 82 people, so we'll be in lunchrooms and ask people to sign up. And then on Friday, we have our Mr. Bethlehem, which is a, I don't know, a male beauty pageant, I guess. And the winnings, or not winnings, but money that we raise will go to a charity of the winner's choice. So whoever wins the Mr. Bethlehem will choose a charity to bring money to. So that's our week, and that's it for Student Senate, I think, for this year.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, and I have a couple questions. I do have one first. The blood drive, is that open to the community members too?
It is open to the community members, yep.
That was one of my questions. What is your name?
My name is Ned Engelbrei.
Thank you.
Oh, sign up for Mr. Bethlehem.
No, with the blood drive.
Sorry, sorry. We've been working on Mr. Bethlehem, the blood drive. Yeah. The community members can come right the day of the event to the A gym in the high school.
First, Ned, congratulations on your Maryland Terrapins. It's a wonderful school. My daughter is there, that's why I know firsthand.
Thank you.
As far as the blood drive, what are the hours? Did you mention that?
It's all day, actually. It's eight, we're taking appointments from eight to 2:00.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, the superintendent's report, and I don't have to say interim anymore.
I would just like to thank everyone for a successful budget vote yesterday. There are many people involved in the budget development, and I certainly appreciate all the work that went into the process and the support of the community. I'd also like to congratulate Jonathan Fishbein, our new board member, and Michael Cooper, our continued board member, for being elected. I'd also like to thank the entire Board for all of your time and dedication to the process so that we're able to provide a quality education for our students, so that's all.
Can I just comment on that? You know, the turnout was a little lower this year, I think, because we had, you know, basically a very good budget that was presented to the voters, but I noticed in some districts around us that actually are larger than we are, and their turnout was way below ours.
Yeah, I noticed.
And even the percentage of the positive votes being, I think, 81.4 percent were positive votes on the budget. Knows a superintendent from North Colony tweeted out that he was happy, he said out that they got 79 percent, so I think we were the best in the area too for that.
When I see him tomorrow, I'll tell him we beat him. And I think that's the first time since I've been on the Board it's been that high. Vice Chair?
Will the barsman raise for Jody now? All right, thank you, Jody. The Board of Education report. Unfortunately, I forget the students' names, but since the last board meeting, there was a congressional art show over in Troy at the Troy Art Center on River Street hosted by our Congressman Tonko, and we had three students who had pieces submitted, and they were phenomenal, the pieces, they really were. And I believe Mrs. Painter is going to have them come to a future board meeting where we'll recognize them, but one of the students was selected as a runner-up, and it was a portrait of, a picture of her grandmother when she was a child, and she had done a stencil drawing of that, and I guess she's actually done a series of four of those of her grandmother. So it was really interesting, and it just, the work that they do and that our students accomplish is phenomenal. I know today, there was the art show at the Legislative Building. Unfortunately, work prevented me from going over at lunchtime, and I know we had several students who had displays there also, so great job to everybody. And then I know tomorrow night is the Capitol District School Board Association Annual Meeting, and they'll be handing out service awards, one from each district. We will have a student who will be receiving an award tomorrow night there. Unfortunately, again, I have another commitment, can't make that, I'm not sure you'll be there.
I'm attending as well.
And you're gonna, okay, good. That's all I have for it.
I represented the Board at the National Honor Society induction, and I was asked to make a few remarks on Mr. Downey and the Board's behalf. It was a wonderful time to spend with students and their families, just kind of recognizing their achievements. And Ms. Mahmoud was the keynote speaker, who was a math teacher at the middle school, the high school, and it was so clear she resonated with so many of those students. They were just thrilled to hear her words. And I went to the Heart and Soul Art Show yesterday for just a little bit, and it was lovely to see so many different pieces and so many different mediums represented, so it was a wonderful thing. And the last thing, I will miss the next board meeting, the June 1 board meeting, I will be attending and lecturing at the National Conference on Race in San Francisco.
I was just going to mention that the STEM Advisory Committee met yesterday, and I was just going to mention a couple of things that may have noticed when those of you came out to vote, that there were items on display, jewelry that had been designed by students and then produced on a 3D printer, and we also had awards for students who designed iPhone cases. And again, they had to do the designs and come up with, or try and come up with something because a lot of them were really good attempts but not quite there, but I think they learned a lot in the process of what they need to do, you know, with building 3D printers, and I think that there's a lot of potential for 3D printers in the future. But we've also, since art has been involved a lot with the STEM Advisory Committee, we just, the group decided to rename it the STEAM Advisory Committee, since it is important, whether it's art or even music, and be very much involved with it.
Anyone else? Yes?
Just a question. Are we gonna, that would be a great thing to bring to the board meeting, the, yeah, the STEM, and even kind of showcasing some of the work, 3D printers, so I assume that's probably on the agenda at some point.
Yeah, it would be great to do that.
Yeah, that would be great. Just, I went to my final DARE graduation as a parent, and wonderful celebration of a really important public education initiative. It was at Hammagrell. They did a really terrific job, but one of the things that I think is interesting is the Albany County Legislature just had a discussion and debate about raising the tobacco age to purchase tobacco products from 18 to 21, and one of the things that some folks who actually voted against it were talking about is, you know, all the need that we need to do more public education on smoking and alcohol use and drug use and stemming that. And, you know, I think one of the things that people don't realize that parents do, and clearly folks in the district do, is we do a really good job at putting forth a program like that in the early ages. And, you know, every time I have a child who goes through the DARE program, my other children start talking about their DARE program. So, you know, it is tough with, you know, the teenage years and some of the peer pressure issues, but I really think that the discussion and the education that they receive in those early grades, you know, my teenagers, my older kids still talk about it, and I think it does work. So I'm glad the district put such a high profile on it, and it was another great event. And the only other thing I just wanted to mention, just because it's been front-page news this week in particular, was the announcement by President Obama about the guidance that the U.S. Department of Education is going to be releasing related to transgender issues in public school systems, and about the department putting forth guidance related to, you know, accessing of, you know, bathrooms and so forth. And I think one of the things we do a great job at Bethlehem is really being compassionate and always focused on the student and making sure that our students are really comfortable in the high school, in the middle school, in all the schools. So I look forward to receiving that, and I know the Board will undoubtedly be having lots of discussions with the district about that.
I'm most familiar with track because my kids run track, but I want to wish all the athletes good luck in their sectional competitions. I also know that for the boys and girls teams, there have been school records broken last week, so maybe Mr. Keys could let us know, confirm that information, and we can maybe recognize students, but good luck to all the athletes in their final competitions.
And I don't know if any of you got to catch any of the jazz concert last night, but I saw about six or seven songs towards the end, and what a fabulous job they did with Mr. Beauregard leading that, and there were a couple soloists that came in and sang some jazz songs, so tremendous job, so.
Okay, the next item is a presentation this evening. We have two of them. The first one will be a middle school presentation on transition and support by Mark Warford.
Can I just say goodbye to my... Oh, yes, yeah, yep. Thank you, Nick. Good evening, Board. Welcome to the middle school. Always a pleasure to have you here. I would also like to congratulate Jody on her new position, and I can speak for the entire middle school when I say that we are very, very pleased that Jody is here and we're very excited for the future. I also like to recognize Ken Rizzo. Ken Rizzo is our hall principal, that is the interim assistant principal at this time right now. Dave Palmer has stepped up from the social studies position, and he is here in the back there as well, and he's taking over the hall principal position. And all the things that I'm going to talk about tonight here were either started or supported by Mike Klugman, and his outstanding leadership in this building has got us where we are right now. So, the presentation is making students matter, so what I'm going to talk about a little bit is, at this time of the year, we do a lot of work to transition our fifth-grade students into the middle school and help them come in, so we're going to talk a little bit about that, and then some of the programs that we have in the building that help support kids once they've got their feet underneath them. So, first thing, to begin, our fifth to sixth grade transition all starts with our counselors. They go to the, they go to each elementary school, and they meet with each of the fifth grade teachers. Every student needs or attended to in terms of building individual schedules that work for those students. They have in-depth conversations and share individual learning characteristics so that we really know each student that comes here into the middle school. Those teachers also fill out individual cards, which give us information, and we use these cards not just from sixth grade, but we use them right straight through seventh grade and eighth grade, and this has all of the particulars that we need to know to make sure that students are placed in the appropriate place for their academic needs, and so this really gets us started with our transition. Next, we have sixth grade students that come from the middle school, and they go to each of the elementary schools. They do presentations for each of the, for all the fifth graders. Wonderful opportunity for them, for the fifth graders, to ask questions of students that actually have made that transition. The fifth grade students oftentimes ask more questions and more in-depth questions to their peers than they would if you have an administrator talking to you in front of an auditorium, so it's a great way to kind of alleviate some of the nervousness and to answer questions that the fifth graders have before they come up here to the middle school. So we also have our parent orientations. We have two orientations. The last one we finished yesterday, and we generally assign elementary schools to come on certain nights, but it's open to whatever night you can come. You know, you may have another sibling that has a concert on one night, so people can attend whichever night they would like to, but the administrators, the counselors, a couple of teachers, our supervisors, SRO Officer Mike Whitley, and a parent representative and PTO representative do an overview of the middle school and then do a question-and-answer session, and many of the parents are more nervous about middle school than the kids coming to middle school. So this orientation really is an opportunity for them to ask us questions about the structure of the middle school, and I know that they walk out of here feeling much, much better about what their children are going to be walking into after those orientations. Next, we have our fifth graders. They come to the middle school, and they visit us. The sixth graders go home half-day, the fifth graders come in, they go, and they go in the cafeteria, they eat lunch here, they do a scavenger hunt through the building, they get to walk the halls, they get to go to the classes, they get to see the teachers. So it's a really great way to introduce them to what the middle school is all about. This day, there's no stress on remembering any teachers, you don't have to remember the room, you don't have to remember the building, just to give them a flavor for what the middle school is like, and to kind of get them excited about coming here to the middle school, and they can see the seventh and eighth graders that are very welcoming, and they wave and they say hi, and the seventh and eighth graders put little signs on the lockers, you know, "Hey, Joe, welcome to the middle school." So it's a great way for the fifth graders to get excited about coming here to the middle school. Next, over the summer, we encourage the sixth graders, which are now sixth graders, to come to the middle school and to walk their schedule. So we actually schedule three tours the last week before school starts, the week before school starts, at 9:00, 10:00, and 11:00, the four counselors have tours of the building, and at that point, students have their schedules, and so the counselors will walk the parents and the students through the building, and then the kids can walk around, have a look at their schedule, find their rooms, really become comfortable. So the last week of school, it's like bees around a honey nest here at school. Lots of middle schoolers with their schedules out, looking at the lockers, but it really helps them to become more comfortable when they get here. And so once they first arrive, the first day of school is really about integrating the students into the middle school experience. Their social circle just expanded by five times. A lot of kids they don't know in their first, in their classes, so the real focus for the first few days of school is socialization, getting to know your team, doing team-building activities, icebreakers, learning about the other kids that are on your team, making new friends, and so that's a big part. See if I can roll this the right way. Yes, all right. Academics start slow, all right? It's a real emphasis on organization, dealing with the transition from different classes, different teachers, going to your locker, how long does it take to get from point A to point B, where's the nearest bathroom, all of those important questions that sixth graders really want to know about. So we take things slow to make sure that they're comfortable with the other kids in the room, with the building, and then we can really begin to focus on academics, all right, which is what we do. All right? Okay, and so the next portion of the presentation is about how we focus on academics and we support the students. One of the biggest changes is the five-week progress reports and the quarter report cards. Five-week reports are new for parents and for students, so the first thing is, is we stress that the five-week report is an opportunity to give parents a real snapshot halfway through the quarter of how their student is doing, but we emphasize that it's not a permanent record. It's an opportunity for them to kind of see halfway through the quarter academically how their students are doing. Aspen is wonderful. We encourage parents to use Aspen, but you know, that five-week report that comes out is a real nice benchmark for the parents, so we encourage them to look for that and to give us feedback about how they feel their students are doing. And then obviously, we have our quarterly report cards. This is feedback for our students, feedback for our parents. The emphasis for our students, especially at the sixth grade, is on help-seeking. If you need assistance, now you don't just have one teacher at the elementary level, you have several teachers. It is so very important that middle school students reach out to teachers during that home base time and really try and get the help that they need. We obviously have a team philosophy here at the middle school, so we are absolutely going to try and support the kids as much as we can, but when you have 1,200 kids in the building and as these students are moving toward the high school, being able to advocate for themselves is so very important. So that's a real emphasis as we look at our quarterly report cards, and emphasis, obviously, on communication, and parents are always encouraged to communicate with teachers, both through Aspen, through email. We are in this together. So a couple of the things that we do to support students are quarterly progress monitoring. So at the end of each quarter, administrators that are assigned to the teams will go in and meet with our teams, and we will look at our scholastic reading inventory, which really identifies, it's a measure of reading comprehension and lexile level, so we have our SRI scores, we have our quarterly report progress, we take our New York State exam results, and then feedback that the teachers have for the first 10 weeks and discuss who are the students that we really feel need additional support, who are the students that we feel are really possibly could be challenged even more. So based on that information, at the end of each quarter, we make decisions about our response to intervention, our AIS, and we have a couple of other programs that I'll explain right now called GROW and FAST to support the kids here at the middle school. So our response to intervention has several different levels. The first one is right at the classroom, where teachers make accommodations for the classroom instruction. If students are falling behind, we try to identify what is the area. It could be organization, they show up without their materials, could be homework completion. So the teachers in their individual classrooms know their students and support the student need at that level. Also, as the team, the teams talk each day as they meet to talk about the students and what we can do as a team. So let's say, for instance, Johnny shows up for math class every day, and he doesn't bring his binder, so as he leaves science class, a science teacher can say, "Hey, you've got math next period, you have your binder, are you ready to go?" So that team approach really helps to get kids organized and to support them, and if a student struggles, let's say with ELA, if there's a very challenging English language arts portion of a science lesson or a social studies lesson, the teachers are on board so that they can support those kids. As a grade level, we have academic intervention services, and these generally are assigned based on the progress against the entire grade level, and the two AIS programs we have here are math and ELA, and we have five days a week we can have a student pulled out if they have a real high level of need, or two times a week during home base, we can support the students as well as any before-school or after-school time with the kids. But the bottom line is, is the students most in need of support receive the most intense intervention here at the middle school. So one of the programs that helps us to do that is called GROW. So the acronym GROW stands for GOAL- So the acronym GROW stands for goals, responsibility, organization, and work ethic. In my opinion, those are the four key ingredients. If you want to be successful at anything, you've got to have a goal, you've got to know what it is you want to accomplish. You need to take ownership for your job, which is a big thing at middle school, taking responsibility for the job that you do. Organization is key. You need to have the tools available to do the job. I don't care if you're making dinner, I don't care if you're trying to be successful at school. If you don't have what you need to get that job done, your chances of success are greatly diminished. And lastly, you've got to have that work ethic. You've got to be willing to put the time in to do the job. So, that's what GROW stands for. Students that are targeted for GROW are students that lack those things. Organizational skills, don't really take responsibility for their work, have a difficult time completing their homework, they don't really manage their time well, and they just don't really seem motivated or engaged in school. And a lot of times, these are habits that have been formed over years of work avoidance. And so, they don't really know what it's like to be successful at school, to feel the accomplishment of really doing their work well. So, how we help them is like this. This is a blank sheet that is filled out for each student in the GROW program. A teaching assistant goes around and writes down the homework for each of their classes in there every single day, right off the board in the classroom that they come from. So this sheet, we know, is absolutely accurate for the work that they complete. On the bottom of the sheet, you'll see that there's a bunch of numbers on the bottom. All right? Those numbers equate to points that they can earn each day. So, GROW, actually, the GROW class takes place ninth period at the end of the day. So when students show up, they have one of those sheets that are filled out. The first thing we do is we check their agenda book. Everything in their agenda book should be exactly what's on the sheet because the teaching assistant went to every single one of their classrooms and wrote it in there. If their agenda book is filled out, they get one point. All their homework that should go home for the night should be in a homework folder inside the GROW homework binder. If all the homework is there, they get another point. All the teachers that have GROW students in their classes know that they can email. Tom Miklich and Jim Farnin are the two teachers that coordinate and work with GROW. And so if students are not participating in class, or if they show up and they're not prepared, they shoot an email over to Jim or Tom and therefore, they get their points for each one of those categories based on feedback from the teachers. And it's a real quick email and the teachers are great about doing that. The GROW class is another point. At the end of the day, do you use your time wisely? Do we have to continually redirect you, or do you use that time to get your work done? That's a point. And then the homework check-in in the morning is two points. And that is the most point value because that really is the most important, staying on top of your work. So, students have the ability to earn seven points a day, 35 points a week. At the end of the week, we tally it all up and they receive a letter grade. So, what happens is, in the morning, they go to the GROW room, Mr. Farnin checks them in. We have highlighters, pink and yellow. So, basically, we take that sheet that the teaching assistant filled out and we say, "Okay, math page 227, 1 through 5, social studies DBQ," and we check it off. So in the morning, after the week, that's what it'll look like. Homework that is completed on time is highlighted yellow, homework that's not done is left blank. And then when it's completed later, we fill it in pink so that we know that it was done, but it was done late. Every single day, students get feedback on, "Do you show up for class on time? Are you organized? Do you write your things in your assignment? Do you get your homework done?" The basic foundations of you want to be, if you're going to be successful in school. At the end of the week, I sit down with each of the GROW kids with the sheet and go through it with them. So every week, we look at exactly, how did we do with writing in our agenda? How do we do with homework completion? So, they get feedback and parents receive one of these sheets completely highlighted with the points on the back and we ask that the parents sign it each weekend. So every week, the parent gets feedback on how successful their students are. And it's incredible how clear it becomes where the deficit area is. Either you just aren't writing things in your agenda book, you're not organized, or you write everything in your agenda book, you show up for class on time, you have all your materials, but you're just not doing your work. If you want to be successful, that's what you need to do. So, GROW has been a real benefit to our students to give them feedback and we've had some great success with that. Another program that Mike created is the FAST program. And basically, that's Friday after-school support. Every Friday from 3 to 5 o'clock, students that are not completing their homework or students that opt into the program can come to the LMC and it's a two-hour time period where they can go ahead and they can get caught up on their work. So basically, each one of the teachers can come down and fill out, we have an envelope for a student, any work that needs to be done is put in the envelope. Mike has an attendance sheet to keep track of the students. And all of the students have a work completion sheet that they fill out on Friday to document exactly what work they've completed. And on the back of the sheet, which I should have made a copy of, you know, is a question, "Do you plan on being here next week?" Which is a great conversation piece at the end of FAST. But FAST really has supported kids that need it and we've got, I believe, we've got a rate of about 10 to 20% of students opt to come down here. So they say, "We want that two-hour time to go ahead and take care of our work." So the last program that we implemented this year that I want to mention is our attendance and mental health committee. This has been a tremendous asset. Joanne Menrath, our school nurse, Kim Panero, our social worker, Mike Whitley, our SRO officer, myself, and each of the counselors, we meet every single week. So each week, we meet with a different counselor. We print up a complete attendance for the last 30 days, so we review attendance here in school. And it has been a tremendous asset to get kids that are not coming to school and we have struggles with parents that are claiming that there's some medical issues, but yet we don't have medical documentation. So we're able to work with the parents and work with the physicians and the kids don't fall through the cracks. So this way, we don't get to a point where we're at the end of the third quarter and we have kids that have 30 absences and we haven't really done anything to address that. So those weekly meetings with a counselor each week keeps us up to speed all year long so we know exactly where our kids are in terms of attendance and academics. So, you know, those are really just a few of the things that we do here at the middle school to help support our kids here. So, at this point, I can take any questions that you might have.
Mark, is, this is just being done in sixth grade at the moment, right? Or does it continue on seventh and eighth grade?
Which is that? What's that?
Any of these programs? The GROW program?
FAST is six, seven, and eight. The GROW program, we start the year out primarily with seventh and eighth graders and the reason for that is because we really want the sixth graders to get their feet underneath them. This is a whole new element for them. And sometimes, just really a change of scenery and a change in teaching staff can really assist kids to kind of, you know, get themselves on a different track. So we want the ability to really be able to see how the sixth graders perform. And I would say, you know, 20 to 30% of the kids that start in GROW, maybe halfway through the year, have really developed some great skills so they can go, they move out of the program. And then we move some sixth graders in that really need additional support because at that point, we can tell that they really need that.
That's great. And then another quick question. Back at the beginning, when you were talking about the five-week progress reports and the quarterly reports. Are they sent to parents electronically through Aspen?
Through Aspen.
Okay. So everybody, I mean, so everybody in the district has access? I mean, are there any families that don't have access that wouldn't receive the information?
There are certainly some families that may not have technology available to them and our counselors do a great job of reaching out to those families and we certainly send out hard copies if that's something that we need to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Just piggybacking on that, can you access Aspen? You can access it from the library or something, right? Yeah, so if you didn't have a computer at home, you can, as long as you have a login. I know it involves transportation and everything, but you can access it.
Yep.
Anyone else? I just have a question about, how many students do you have in the GROW program?
The GROW program right now, we've got approximately, between 10 and 12. So, but we're hoping to add some more students this year to kind of expand the program a little bit. When I was in the screen bush, there was, we had a number of, it was a larger program because there was more funding available. So we're looking to expand it a little bit this year and see where it goes from there.
I guess that's where I was going to go with it, with, I thought it was only for sixth graders, but seventh and eighth graders. It seems like it is a program that could be expanded to a larger body of students because I know some eighth graders that might need some additional organizational skills that might not be part of the GROW program. That I think, prior to going to high school, to like relook at maybe some students that might have been strong in sixth grade and they're kind of slacking off a little bit, getting ready for that high school transition would be a good place to maybe identify some of the students.
Maybe summon the high school.
Let's start with the eighth graders. So, I just see there's a lot of benefit for that program that it could be utilized on a larger scale.
Yeah, it really focuses on the foundational skills that you need to be successful at school and it gives parents and kids clear feedback on a regular basis. And there's a lot of adult interaction. Every day when you do homework check-in, you know, it gets a little old coming into the same person, not having your homework each day. So, it's a little incentive to, you know what, you can do this, you can get this done.
And that's where I'm, with sixth grade, you're a little eager, you want to please. They do a lot with organization in sixth grade with a lot of the teachers doing homework checks and whatnot, or binder checks. And I think when you get to eighth grade, there's a little less of that going on. So now these kids are recognizing, hey, I don't have to be as organized, so the accountability goes down a little bit. So, I think it's great if we could focus on that. The other question I had was on the mental health program, which I think is fabulous that you're doing that in the middle school. And you were talking about, talking about chronically ill students that might not be documentation. Do we contact the parent to maybe come in and be part of that meeting?
Oh, well, absolutely. Part of the decision-making that happens in that group always includes parents. Parents are always included.
Because you listed it and I didn't see the parent on there, so I was...
Sure. Yeah, well, the meeting that we have each week, really, we run through all of the students and any students that have had more than three absences in 30 days, we tick through those. So we wouldn't want to invite a parent to that meeting because we wouldn't discuss other students. But out of that meeting, almost every time, the action plan is, who's going to contact mom, who's going to contact the physician? So, they're absolutely part of that process.
Thank you.
Joanne?
This was really helpful. I mean, I didn't realize all the behind-the-scenes stuff that goes on and just, I would encourage every parent out there who's got somebody coming to the middle school for the first time to look at the slides, for those of you watching at home or whatever, because that was really impressive. Just a couple questions. How long have these programs, each of them, GROW and FAST and the mental health program, how long has the middle school been doing those?
GROW has been around, I think, for four years, but we've been piecemealing it. You know, staffing has not been there. Sometimes, GROW has been, we've only been able to offer it for half a year. One year, we could do three, we could do it for a half year, then we couldn't do it third quarter, then we could do it fourth quarter. So it's been, it's been growing and becoming more consistent over the last couple of years. FAST, Mike, I think, has been four years after school. And the attendance mental health committee was really a pilot that Joanne Menrath and Kim Panero really advocated for and said that we need. And so we started this year and it's really been a great benefit. We've seen some really great results. And part of that is having Mike Whitley, our SRO officer, with us. So that brings in that whole outside piece that, the great thing is, is that you've got everybody around the table. A lot of times, counselors may be dealing with family stuff that's going on and the nurse may be dealing with another piece, but we don't ever put the pieces together. So this is a great way to put all those pieces together.
Yeah, that's terrific. And one of the questions I have is, well, first of all, I just want to say, for the parents who are really nervous about the middle school, and I remember being that parent, one of the things that you guys do a terrific job is your open house. I remember vividly driving in here and one of the things, you know, seeing folks directing you to park and then you walk into the school and you have students everywhere directing you. I mean, it just really sort of took the, you know, bigness out of the middle school and made it less scary, made it very manageable, and also made it really friendly. And I remember vividly sort of that experience. So you do a lot of things really well and obviously, today, this was terrific. One of the things that I often think about is the survey that we did and I remember the numbers of students at the elementary level that when we asked them about, you know, how, I forget what the term of the question was, but it was essentially a question of, you know, how happy are you at school to come to school? How, you know, how, do you have friends, those kind of things? And, you know, we all loved the numbers because they were very high at the elementary school, like, you know, 90% or in that range. But, you know, if you're an elementary student who's in that 10%, you know, I always kind of worried about those 10%. So you're now taking some of those students who have clearly difficulty making friends at the elementary level, which is a much easier, friendlier environment. And now, you know, yeah, they're a small number, but now they're moving on to the middle school, which is a bigger, scarier place. Can you talk a little bit about how the middle school kind of identifies kids that need a little help making friend groups, kind of assimilating into a really big environment and kind of being successful socially?
Well, I think, I think a big piece of it is just observing, looking at the lunchroom, how much interaction is going on between students. Parents are really a great source. Parents will call us and say, "Hey, you know, our counselors are phenomenal. Our counselors do such a great job of working with the parents and working with the students." So, and they have groups that they run, banana splits groups, friendship groups. And so, they put that out to kids that if kids would like to participate in this. And they just really talk with the team because we have team time and because our counselors go to the teams, the teams really have a finger on the pulse of the students and they recognize the kids that really could use additional help with social interaction. And so, out of those conversations, the counselors then invite kids to these things. Part of our attendance and mental health meetings would be, we recognize that kids that, you know, may show signs of some depression, show signs of alienation. And we talk about that at that meeting and oftentimes, our action plan will be, you know, let's have Kim Panero try and hook up with her, or let's try and get her in one of the groups. And this coming year, I believe one of the focuses of our counseling department is to have more individual groups and sessions going on. So we're going to really put some more emphasis on creating those environments where kids can connect with one another and have more opportunities for kids to come in and do that.
And at the beginning of the presentation where you talked about kind of the counselors or the teachers going into the elementary schools and sitting down with the, you know, the faculty there who are telling you about each kid, is part of that, that social thing? So you kind of know who you want to keep an eye on?
Absolutely. Part of the conversation is absolutely with the fifth grade teachers and their perspective on kids that really need, you know, not only academic support, but, you know, families that are kind of in crisis that may need support. And also, the opposite, the social and the emotional needs as well.
Okay. Thank you.
If a student has an IUP and is involved with either GROW or FAST or both, do you interface with the special ed staff at this time? Or are these, none are considered as independent?
We do. However, you know, many of the students that have an IUP or a 504 have got some support services that are similar. A resource room, an aide or a teacher that's there to support and to assist. So, GROW, although we do have some interface between the two, really helps to try and catch some of the kids that may not have that special education support.
Great. Thank you.
For the GROW and the FAST program, how are the students identified and can parents who have concerns request that their child be considered?
Sure. Generally, like I said, with the sixth graders, we wait a little while to see how things shake out academically and with our sixth grade and seventh grade that move up, our counselors really have a good sense of the kids that really need additional support. So generally, it's the counselors that will reach out to parents and say, "Hey, we really struggled this year, but we've got a program that we think would really help." But we do have parents that do call and say, "Hey, I heard about this program, you know, is there any chance that we can, that my kid can participate?"
And can you make sure to send us the updated PowerPoint because we have an old version here?
Yes. I was taking pictures last night at our parent orientation and today I was taking pictures, so I was updating it while we were setting up.
Okay. I have a colleague who has a child in a district that doesn't have these kinds of supports. I'd love to show her some of the ideas because she's sort of self-inventing it herself.
Would love to share.
Do we do anything? I have, I work with a gentleman, his wife works for Mahanison and she's a social worker. And they have it set up where she has lunch several times a week where it's like an open-door lunchroom. a week where it's like an open door lunchroom. And a lot of kids will come and in that way, they're identified as kids who really feel uncomfortable in the lunchroom or large settings. Do we do anything similar?
Absolutely. Frank Daly, Kim Panero, our counselors, all of them have lunch sessions that are not mandatory. If students want to go to lunch, that's great. But if they want to come and join the conversation, and that's one of the things we're hoping to increase this year. So.
Right.
The point I would interject is a thank you to the Capitol as well as the board for maintaining our ability to provide as much non-mandated social work as we do.
Right.
Because the percentage of what we're able to provide is shifting. We're recommending we need to provide the non-mandated services.
Right.
Absolutely.
And if it's a, but you talked about wanting to grow the Grow program. If it's a budget item or a resource issue, if it's something that you think is really imperative to building it into the middle school, you know, present that information to the board and to Jody, you know, for next year, whatever your needs are.
We will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Warford.
Okay.
Nice presentation. Thanks.
Before we go on to the next presentation, I forgot to mention something in the beginning. How many of you students are PIG students? Participation government? Okay. Your requirement is that at the end of the meeting, you need to come up, there'll be sign out sheets up here at the desk. We'll take a break at nine o'clock if the meeting is still going on. And at that point, you can come up and sign out. And if you have any forms that need to be signed by any of the board members, we'll do that. If the meeting gets over prior to nine o'clock, just come up at that time.
Okay. Our next presentation is a potential facilities improvement project with Greg Nolte. Well, I guess, change. You got it. You didn't update the agenda for me.
Good evening, everybody. Seems like we just finished a bond. And as you know, we've talked about this before. Our facilities are used extensively by both the district and by the community. And based on all that utilization, we have some wear and tear that goes on. The assets only last so long, so we are regularly reviewing the condition of those assets and determining when we need to do a next round of improvements. Greg Nolte, our Director of Facilities, is here. This is all the stuff that he's responsible for, just a piece of all the things he's responsible for. Over a million square feet of our buildings, it's a lot of classrooms, lunchrooms, and hallways, and roofs, and bricks and mortar, some of the stuff that's not always visible to the students, but clearly something that matters to the overall environment in the school. What we do to formally assess the condition of those assets is every five year, we have a capital facilities plan. It's quite an extensive document, and it looks at all of the components of the various structures that we have, whether it is the grounds surrounding the buildings, the buildings themselves, health and safety items, all of the various systems within the building, and technology in the classrooms as well. The architects, when they're doing this summary for us and working closely with O and M, prioritize the work based on the condition. And they try to phase it for us so that they can determine when the work should be completed in order to keep everything in in good condition. It's a scary number if you look at the total on the report, because in fact, they're looking at close to $90 million worth of work that would be required over the next five years. We have determined that we really don't think it's wise to do something of that magnitude. Like everything else, we prioritize our resources on that. Our project team is vast, just because of the scope of the work that has to be done. We have the OACMF team, which is basically the owner, being the district. We have our architect, the construction manager, and then a financial advisor who helps us as we're working through the reports that get submitted for state aid to generate our building aid, as well as to help us finance the projects with the issuance of debt. You may recall, we had gone through an RFP process for these professional services at the start of the last bond, in which we hired the architect and the construction manager and the financial advisor as well. Right now, we do have elements within the contract that allows us to renew that. So we are looking at that and assessing that with counsel. And as we continue to go through this process, we'll give you updates on that in the coming months. We talk about the periodic need to do this work. This slide just gives you an overview of the projects that have been done. They've ranged from just under $4 million to the largest one of $93 million in 2003. And what we've been talking about from when we had developed our last $20 million bond and as we've been going through the budget process, it's a little bit easier to manage the breadth of these projects if we're doing smaller projects. Arguably, the $93 million project spanned multiple fiscal years and it was very, very large. By comparison, the $20 million project that we just completed was much easier to keep tabs on. And our architects and construction manager had commented that it was one of the most smoothly run projects that they had seen with the various districts that they deal with. So we like keeping it manageable and we think that also keeps it manageable from a community perspective, because you're not looking at significant additions to your debt. It's really something that's in the smaller range. The potential projects that we're going to be looking at more closely as we go through the coming months with this encompass a whole range of areas. We try to, as we're looking at the prioritized list, want to make sure that we are considering all of the buildings and resources within the district and that we're hitting the items that are of greatest need. A lot of these are not what I'll call very exciting, unless you're Greg Nolte. But a lot of them are fairly, you know, masonry, roofwork, things like that, a lot of people don't tend to get excited about. But they are nonetheless very important. I think one of the highest priority items that we have on there that will certainly generate a lot of discussion and interest in the community are some proposed high school auditorium renovations. Bonus points for anybody who knows what year the auditorium was constructed, 1952, many, many moons ago. So while we have done some work over the last few years with the various projects, we had done some sound panels that were installed. We had some rigging improvements at one time. There was some lighting with the O3 bond. It really hasn't had a significant amount of work done in recent history. And it's certainly something that's used extensively by all of our student groups, whether it's the orchestras or the choral groups, plays, you know, theater, musicals. We have the community using it for different events. It's absolutely a high traffic area. So, you know, as we start to delve into that, we'll have a number of conversations about, you know, what should the scope of that work be and what is going to meet not only the needs currently for our students, but what is going to meet the longer term needs. So, you know, this is our opportunity to look at that and have those conversations. Also, probably of great interest to the community, we'll be doing some updating to the high school library media center. We've been trying to look at how to maximize that instructional space so that more students can take advantage of it and that it's more flexible space. So that also will probably garner some interest in the coming months. So the full report, again, as I mentioned, is on the website. So we're hoping that people can take a look at that as well. But we also will be talking about the higher priority items and looking at, you know, what is the appropriate scope for this next bond. Now you'll note absent on that slide are anything relating to technology needs. And that was deliberate. And the reason for that is because you may recall that the district about a year and a half ago had been awarded funding under the state's smart bond funding of just about $2 million. And Sal D'Angelo and his staff has been working with us in advancing a technology plan. All of those approvals and all of those reports are going to go on a parallel path, but it will be independent from the bond. So there will be some public meetings with that as that is developed as well and will help continue to move forward with technology. Projects are not really a quick process. Not only is there the review that we do internally looking at the five-year facilities plan, we have to go through a number of different approval procedures. If you go start to finish, you can be looking at probably close to two, two and a half years to go through all of this. Once the board and the community have the opportunity to discuss what work is most important, you have to have the board do an approval on the project. There are certain, the SECA, the State Environmental Quality Review Act reviews that have to be done. Once that scope is set, then the architects delve in and start to formulate all of the specific plans to accomplish that work. And that takes many months for them to go through that. Then those plans end up going to the state education department, and there is extensive review that goes on there. We've talked in the past about close to a year for some of the reviews to be completed. I think the state has heard and responded to the collective cries from school districts to say, please, we really need you to be able to move these through more quickly. There are preferred windows for holding your community vote. You want to have the vote at a time when the public is available and around. So obviously, you would want to avoid winter months. So you're looking at something either potentially in the fall or on the other end of the fiscal year in the spring. The SED approvals hopefully would be lowered. We would be looking at maybe around 10 months. I just heard last week that that was starting to drop a little bit, even closer to eight months. But the timeline is a little bit of a wild card, just because of the extensive nature of those reviews. I think it's very important that we come up with a well-developed project, more so than focusing on the actual timeline. This is really presented more so to give you, I guess, realistic expectations as to how much time it will take to get a project through. If we had meetings over the course of the next few months and determined that the top list of projects is something that everybody is really enthused about, and we have widespread consensus on the extent of the work, and say we were able to hold a vote in maybe early October, which is an aggressive timeline, then you might be able to get a shovel in the ground in the summer of 2018. You would most likely be looking at two summers worth of work. So again, depending on how quickly it moves through, you would either be looking at the summer of 18 and 19. Why the summer? Of course, because the students aren't here and it's less disruptive to everybody. Or alternatively, if it takes longer to size up the project, if the reviews are taking longer, you may be looking at the summer of 19 and 2020. From a financial standpoint, either way, it will work for the district. There's no impacts in terms of the dropping off of our debt schedules within this perspective. But it is a long, complicated process. And it is certainly, because you are spending money and going to the community, you want to make sure that you have the thorough review of those items. The funding of the projects, as you may recall, is largely covered with building aid. Right now, our building aid ratio is just over 68%. One of the other funding tools that we have is the capital reserve that we've talked about over the course of our budget meetings. So we are expecting to have about $4 million in that reserve as of the end of this year. And those are resources that with the community and the board's approval, we can use to reduce the amount of bonding that is required to be issued. The net amount, so basically the total project cost, less what you spend in the reserve, less your state aid, is the local share. And that's the piece that the community would be covering. The way this works is, and this is just an example, this isn't saying it's going to be a $30 million project. But if we were spending $30 million on the project, not everything that we spend is aidable. So the state has, as you know, some fairly complex formulas they're going to go through and determine how much is subject to that state aid rate of 68%. Assuming it was 95% of our costs were covered, we apply the building aid at 68%. You'd have about $19 million. You then would have a bond amount of about $26,000, you know, even lower if you were able to back off that $4 million in the reserve. The way the debt service works, obviously, you're financing the project over time. Building aid works the same way. They assume that you've issued debt at a certain amount and that aid comes into you every year over the life of that project. So if, in fact, we issued a bond for $26 million, that debt service would be about $2 million a year with current interest rates for a 20-year bond. If you get the building aid then on that 19.3 million, which is the aidable amount, that would generate about $1.5 million a year, leaving about $465,000. That would be your local share. So with the current tax rates for a $250,000 home, at most, you're talking about an additional $38 per year on the debt service, just to kind of break it down and give you an example of what you might expect. So again, this is the beginning of the process. As we go into the coming months, meetings, we'll be presenting more detail. We'll have photos coming. Greg Nolte will be presenting more of the specifics of what is in the recommendations. And we'll begin that process of getting feedback from the board and the community on what everybody would like to see within this next bond. So really, it's just a discussion at this point to see, you know, what are you comfortable with in terms of the process? What would you like to see in terms of these meetings? We can start presenting that information at the June meetings on either the first and/or the 15th. And we have fewer meetings in the summertime to work with. But certainly through the website, we would hope to put up the information and garner comments as well with that process. So that's what we have. Greg and I will take any questions.
On the slide eight, the potential project timeline, I'm trying to think of where any possible community forums fits in there. Because it talks about presentations about the bond scope. Do you, in June and July and August, September, are those, is your vision for this, are those presentations to the board or also to the community? Or have you gotten that far?
It's really going to be the preference of the board. In the past, we've done a combination. The last project that we did, because it had been so many years since we had done a project, we did a combination. We had capital presentations at the board meetings. We also held three separate community forums. So we picked another night during the week and announced what we were trying to cover and invited people to come out. Because that was the first project, because there were some elements that really were garnering a lot of community discussion, we felt that that combination of multiple board meetings and multiple community forums was what was needed at the time. So, you know, really, that's a sense of what are we getting for feedback from the board and the community with this proposed scope?
But if we did a community forum, it sounds, it looks like it would probably be sometime in, depending on the 45 days and all the rest of the adoption, somewhere July, August, September at the very latest, I would imagine.
That would be, if you wanted to hit that first summer of 2018 timeline backing up from all the steps that need to occur, yes, you would want to have those forums earlier.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess my question for Greg, you have the high school, potential projects, high school auditorium. And I was just wondering, had you looked at the middle school auditorium? I know it's not as old. But I know, sitting in performances for the last three or four years, when you're sitting there, not that the chairs are small, they are a little tiny, but they make a lot of noise as you're listening to the performance. And every time somebody moves, you can barely hear the person on.
We just need a no fidgeting rule to solve the problem.
So I'm hoping that maybe because we're doing, you know, we're looking at doing extensive renovations on the the high school auditorium, that we kind of do like a auditorium package deal. So maybe that's something you might want to look at. Or can you address it?
Yeah. I don't think we identified anything from middle school auditorium at this point. We are doing some lighting, more house lighting as part of the energy performance contract. But nothing as far as that goes. We did do a lot of work in there in the last bond, lots of painting, stage lighting, that type of stuff. But nothing was identified. But that's the first I heard about the squeaky seats, though.
They're pretty.
And again, we can, we.
They're pretty.
We can.
They're pretty rickety. And if we're, I don't know, are we looking at seats in the new, but I know we don't have any details. But if we are looking at seats and seats are a potential issue, it might be like a group discount when you're ordering more. So I'm just saying, let's be positive.
Well, this is one of the reasons why we're going to have these meetings, because I have my architects, engineers. We talked to a lot of administrators. We got everybody's ideas and created this five-year facilities plan. We don't hear everything. We don't see everything. So this is why we probably have some of these. We don't hear everything, we don't see everything, so this is why we probably have some of these forums, but yeah, we can, we can look at that and consider that.
Thank you.
Greg, I know this is a, it's a very aggressive schedule and especially has a lot of great items and some that may be controversial to some people and some that would be very supportive of the people, but in terms of items that would be critical if we were to push it out a year and say, what would be the main concerns you would have if you're able to speak to that?
What might be critical to me is different than is critical to other people, especially in the community, because I've heard a lot of thoughts after we've completed the last bond as far as we should be doing this, we should be doing that. Are those items that are critical?
I would say more health, safety, is when I define critical, health and safety, you know, roofs leaking, it would cause potential issues and stuff like that.
We as a district are in very good shape, okay, and that's what we're trying to maintain is that good shape. When you start seeing the long list of items, I don't think that there's anything that is, you know, that I would consider critical that couldn't be maintained by, by my department over the next number of years. I mean, I wanted to pose this because you look at this timeline and we're not talking about a shovel in the ground, even with an aggressive schedule until summer of 2018. That's a, that's a long time away, okay? And, and again, we can, we can do whatever schedule, you know, the board wants, but it just pushes it out and pushes it out even farther, so. And those needs still exist from what I hear, so.
And I'm, I'm just looking to make sure we have ample opportunity for the community input and for, you know, community support.
And I know, one of the items that I had forgotten to mention is that five-year facilities plan is using pricing estimates that are more near-term. So one of the downsides to pushing it out even longer is generally the construction costs escalate over time. So to the extent we delay it a year or so, those costs are going to go higher and that may mean that some of the items that you thought you could afford, if you were trying to limit the bond to a certain amount, 25, 30,000 or $30 million, you might not be able to do all of that based on that cost escalation.
Yes.
So I just want to reinforce that the prior, I'm not even going to call it priority list, but the, the project, potential project list is based off the five-year facilities plan, which a significant amount of time and energy goes into developing it. And in, what I'm going to suggest, and I'm not sure if the board will agree with this, is at the next meeting, you come back and perhaps reflect a bit more what Mr. Downey said in terms of what might be the priorities, because my sense is it's a balance all the time. It's not like, it's not falling apart, but it has to be addressed. So somehow, how might you look at that list and other issues and come back and saying, you know, we really do want, you're starting to put together a priority list and then reflect on the timeline a bit more. I, I would propose, I'm getting ahead of us, but I would propose some community discussion perhaps in August and again in early fall. I think summer is a difficult time to commit the community to come out. And I would hate, I think this district has a great reputation for transparency and community involvement, and I wouldn't want to compromise that. I get, I get that you want to get the shovels in the ground and use maximum time when students aren't here to do the bigger work, but I, I think there's a way to do both. But I would like to see a community forum or some kind of community discussion, whatever form it's going to take, in even September, and perhaps still make a timeframe that's going to meet your goals.
There, there's a possibility with that, right? Doing a, a community meeting in August and September, are we pushing it too far out into September?
Putting together the information that would be reviewed with the community is very doable in that timeframe. It's just a question is, does it work with the schedules of the community? You know, are they feeling like they can get access to the information? Are they available to come in? I mean, those are certainly slower months for people. But what we found is those that are interested in certain aspects really will make an effort to, at least if they can't come to the forum, will certainly weigh in with comments. So if there's a group that's really interested in the high school auditorium, they will, you know, we'll advertise it, we'll use the website, we can use SNNs and try to bring it to people's attention so that we can get that feedback. Because we would love to get it right the first time and the best way to do that is with this input.
Did you have, Diane?
I just had a comment because I was kind of a little surprised to see all the security cameras for the elementary schools. Just a comment.
Yeah, that's, that was going to be a topic of conversations. Do we want to expand our camera system into our elementaries? Most schools have them, or most school districts have them, okay? So I block them together, or at least in my prioritization of, of the lists that you'll see, but that'll be a board discussion if, if you want to go that way.
Yeah, is that something that the principals had requested for the elementary schools? Have there been issues and concerns?
Nobody requested those. We were just trying to keep up with times and other school districts and I think it's probably the industry that might suggest that they're the right thing to do from the point of discouragement.
If there's an incident to be able to use those cameras to be able to track if someone was in.
I understand that, but just at the elementary school, I just.
No, but, well, Sandy Hook was an elementary school.
I was going to say, the goals might be different, you know, depending on what level. But, you know, clearly if, if there's an incident and they want to track, as opposed to something that they may be looking at more a pattern at the high school.
Yes, Mike. I think if we do have a fuller presentation in June, we'll have a better sense of what's in, what projects are involved in this, and then we can have the discussion of what size bond we are considering, and then we can have the discussion about whether we think it's feasible to do it within this timeframe, given we want to have some opportunities for community input. The facilities committee did look at all of this at our last meetings. I'm certainly in favor, if we can get all the pieces together of trying to be aggressive and, and get this so we can do, start the work in 2018. It just seems, if we can make it work, to wait till 2019 just doesn't make sense to me, but there are a lot of movable pieces that we're going to have to make sure work and that we get it done right like we did with the last bond. But I think we'll have a better sense of that if, when we have the next presentation.
Yeah. Yes, Joanne.
A couple of things. I'm also on the facilities committee and I agree with Mike. I think it would be valuable to have a pretty comprehensive, kind of more detailed presentation of different options and kind of give us, you know, a little bit of, you know, here's the range of priorities and, you know, this is what this size bond is, this is what this size bond is, and, you know, maybe we land somewhere in between or maybe we, you know, kind of get there. And, and I think related to the, the public input, just a couple of thoughts. I mean, for some people, summer isn't August, summer's July. For some people, summer is July and not August, or whatever, the reverse. So maybe we kind of, knowing that, you know, some people are more available one month and not at all the other month, maybe we sort of work around that and offer some flexible both months of community forums. I also wonder if there's a way that we can use technology to get people's input, maybe some simple, you know, sort of survey or simple kind of, you know, even a webinar or something where if you're on vacation and there's a community input session on something, you know, you can, you can link in. I just think, you know, I'd hate to see us lose time just because we're, you know, trying to plan around somebody's vacation when, you know, we can use different means and be creative about that. And I agree with Mike, I think, it might seem weird for the community for us to be talking about a bond when, you know, we just finished a budget and whatnot, but this is sort of no different than, you know, finishing one project in your house and starting to think about two years from now or three years from now, what the next project is on your house. And it's about infrastructure support and infrastructure improvements, which in my mind is something we should absolutely be doing, but it's also things like, you know, the auditorium, which we talked about in lots of meetings prior. We have a showcase music and arts program in Bethlehem and the high school auditorium really could use a lot of work. And one of the questions I raised, excuse me, in the facilities meeting that I shared with the board was, you know, we have these great music programs that we all sort of cram into the gym, and if you get there one second later than the 9,000 other people, you're sort of standing at the top, kind of peering over. And I do wonder if there is a way, if we're, if we're investing in the auditorium, to be thinking about how we can possibly, maybe it's not even possible because of the number of people, but if it's possible to create an auditorium that has some sort of excess seating capacity, and some of your options kind of got a little creative, and, you know, they're obviously more expensive, but I also, you know, I don't want us to put, you know, X thousand dollars into an auditorium that five years from then, after that's done, or three years later, we say, geez, we really should have kind of spent the 3,000 or 5,000 extra dollars to, you know, do it right. So I do think about that because we do have an exceptional music program and we've all been there this time of year in particular, where we're all crammed in the gym. And maybe it's just not possible, but maybe it is and maybe we should kind of be thinking through all that. But I'm glad that we're having this conversation now and I do think that I would love to see the public kind of weigh in and let us know, give us some guidance. I also, since we're talking about the auditorium that would benefit the music and arts program, whether or not we would want to invite the BMA to kind of share their thoughts and give us some insight into, you know, what are they thinking? You know, maybe, maybe there's some kind of shared thing we could do together that would add some dimension to the auditorium that we haven't thought of that they could kind of work with us on. So I think there's a huge opportunity, but I, I don't, for the sake of, it sounds like one of the sticking points is our timing now is a little clunky and maybe we could do lots of things this summer then invite people at different times to weigh in, so there's multiple opportunities so that we wouldn't lose time and then be looking at, geez, now we have to look at 2019.
I think electronic age is such that, you know, people can provide input, whether they're sitting on a porch overlooking the lake or laying on the beach or whatever. So I, no one is really that far away. I mean, very few people turn off their devices when they're away on vacation. They probably should, but just to have a break, but I'm sure we can get input no matter what at any time.
I don't want to belabor the point, but I think for a lot of families, September is even crazier than the summer. And while I'm sure there are some families in the community who can afford to go away for all of July and all of August, and God bless them, I know I'm not one of those. So if I were to miss a forum in July, I would be around in August, so. And I think if people are really interested in providing input, they will either come to a forum or contact the board one way or the other.
All right, so, no, no, go ahead.
I agree with Mike and Joanne. I'm not on the facilities committee, but two years out is a long time and we're looking at a five-year facilities plan. So we bump it out, now we're at three. The thing that I would like to see just in case, once we have the community forums, is maybe two bonds broken out just in case the community doesn't support as large of a bond, just to kind of have, maybe we do 15 now, 15 later, just if that's something that they're interested in, we have that ready to go, so it doesn't delay it, if that's the sentiment of the community, so.
Yeah, we have wide ability and range in order to structure them, so. Carvable, scalable.
And, and it's going to take a commitment by the board itself to, to, I mean, we wouldn't have to be at every community forum, but we should have a presence at every one.
I would, I would just suggest that the board and, and the district do a lot of work in June and July, because we, we don't want to necessarily invite the community into a discussion that has so, it's so amorphous, because we have a lot of work to do before it even goes out, I would imagine, to the community, that, you know, more presentations. What, what's your priority list? What's the range? Because we have to do, have some of the parameters, I think, before we just say, you know.
Well, I think if they come back next month in June and present more information, the, the community is always invited to come to meetings and then speak.
Yeah, of course, of course, but I think we're at the very beginning stages, so.
So we've left you wanting more.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else, any other questions? Then, then we'll plan that, you know, you'll present again in June and we'll continue down the path.
All right, thank you.
Okay, that is, completes our presentations. The next item on the agenda is a recognition of visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item. So anyone who would like to, come up to the microphone? Okay, then we'll move on. Next is finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through C.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That item carries. Professional personnel. It is.
Oops, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's not what I said.
I was jumping in too soon.
Let me read, please.
Sorry, sorry, Matt.
She's reading my mind, but I need to, I need to read it for the public and for the record. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items A through S.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Wait, was she going to say something?
No, she just was motioning to approve it.
I saw Matt Dixby's name and for some reason, Matt.
Okay. Any abstentions? Any against that item carries? Flipped quite a few pages, that was a very long item. Support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through C.
Second.
That's a first, a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Item number 12, other action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items A through B.
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Now, at this time, the board would recognize anyone who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. Is there one? So, okay, if you'd like to come up, state your name and speak into the microphone, please.
I would, and I have copies, letter.
Okay.
That would be helpful. I should just give you a word, take one, pass it out, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Monroe. Thank you for your many.
It's.
Do I have to like really hold it and everything?
You can pull it up and state your name would be intelligible.
Yes, I will do that. Does it block?
It tightens around there.
Okay, sorry. It's not my thing. Okay, thank you for your many years of service in focusing on the academic, social, and emotional needs of our students. My name is Karen Rice. I am a resident and taxpayer in the Bethlehem School District, as well as a public school educator in a neighboring district. I am greatly disturbed by President Obama's recent declaration of intent to force public schools to allow persons who are confused about their gender to be able to use restroom and locker facilities that make them feel most comfortable. It is my understanding that this directive that came from the executive office is out of line with the processes and procedures that are provided for in our United States Constitution. It seems President Obama was careful not to mandate this decision at this time and that he is giving public schools guidance for handling this concern. There seems to be enough public outcry that the legislature and probably the United States Supreme Court will be required to weigh in on this decision. Several states in our nation have already determined they will not bow down to this ruling. In the meantime, I am requesting that the Bethlehem School District resist following through on this directive. I am distressed that the feelings of a minute portion of our population is being imposed on the majority of our students and staff. I strongly believe that there will be an increase in the anxiety and fear amongst our student body and staff when considering their safety and privacy in using restrooms and locker rooms in our schools. It will also be a great distraction from being able to provide an environment that is conducive to learning. I am concerned about the social and emotional well-being of the majority of our students who had. who at this age already struggle with an exorbitant amount of pressure over academic demands, peer pressure, as well as confusion with their place in this world. Will we seriously add the pressure of who will be in the restroom when I need to use it? I do feel compassion for these youth that are confused about their identity, and I do believe they need to be heard and helped. I also understand that public schools and most businesses have provided alternate accommodations for restroom and locker room situations. As educators, shouldn't it be our goal and even our responsibility to help our youth to become healthy, stable, contributing members of our society? Shouldn't we be helping our youth to develop clear moral standards and lifestyles that will help our communities and nation to once again be a leader and role model throughout the world? Every adult and teenager that I have spoken to about this issue has stated how concerned they are with the President's directive. Our community members seem to have a strong opinion but are not necessarily taking the time to bring their concerns to the bodies that may be able to make a difference. Nationwide, communities, school districts, and states need to determine what stand they will take with this executive guidance. I am requesting that this body, the Bethlehem Central Schools Board of Education, does take a stand against this directive from the President's office. I am requesting that this board take a stand to, at the very least, wait until this issue is addressed by our state and national legislative and judicial branches. I am requesting that this Board of Education unites with other suburban council members and lead the way to the New York State School Board Association. I am praying that this organization will also take a stand and carry the message to our state assembly, state senate, and on to the governor's office, ultimately to our nation's Congress, Supreme Court, and executive office. In the meantime, I will continue to reach out to my neighbors, other teachers and administrators, to encourage them to speak out against this injustice to the majority of our students and the very nature of what our school systems are about, education. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing how this board will respond to this very controversial issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm going to leave this.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment to the board? No? Okay.
I have to say something.
We don't engage in conversation with it. Right? That is our policy, we don't.
I know, but our policy is, is already in place. I'll just put it that way. Our policy is already in place.
Future meetings? The next meeting is Wednesday, June 1st, at 6:00 PM with the anticipated 6:00 PM executive session. At 6:30, there will be a reception for newly tenured staff. And then the 7:00 PM regular Board of Education meeting, that's at the Bethlehem, back at the high school, at the Library Media Center there. Tuesday, June 7th, there's an audit committee meeting at 5:30. That will be at the Bethlehem Central High School, Room B115. And then the next board meeting after that is June 15th, 6:00 PM executive session, start time. 6:30, there'll be a reception for those teachers that will have retired during the 2015-16 school year. We please ask all of them to come out and share in their joy that night. We look forward to seeing them that evening.
It's all the staff, you know, non-instructional staff also.
Did I say teachers?
You just said teachers.
Oh, I'm sorry. BCSD retirees, all staff. My apologies to everybody. But anyone who retired during the 2015-16 school year is welcome to come to that, and we look forward to seeing you that evening and celebrating your milestone of retiring. And then at 7:00 PM, we'll have a regular board meeting. Again, that meeting is at the Bethlehem Central High School, at the Library Media Center. Have a motion to adjourn?
So.
First and a second? All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.
We need sign-out sheets.
Thank you. Yeah, sign-out sheets. And pig, pig students, please come up and sign out?
Oh, so we just, just put out a sheet of paper?
All right, we'll put a sheet. I got it.
Here. You have. Thank you. 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 Thank you.